September 23rd, 2013. Let's have a roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norakis.
Here.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Henry Quant.
Here.
And Wes Ryan.
Here.
Do we have a sign up sheet for citizens present?
Are there any?
I don't see a whole lot of citizens, but.
I think so.
Obviously, we do not. Okay. The minutes of the meeting of August 12th, 2013 are before us. Is there a motion to approve?
It's a move.
Second.
Discussion? None, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have a special order of business and presentations. Number first one is the four Cs. But that's Nikki.
Evening.
It's Allison.
Name, Allison.
Good evening. Nikki's here if we do have any questions. Okay. In 2005, the agency purchased the D-Lake School Building for use as a center for arts and culture. The following year, the four Cs entered into a lease agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency to operate the Lincoln City Cultural Center. In anticipation of repairs to the D-Lake School Building, the agency budgeted $25,000 in this fiscal year budget. And at the June 19th agency meeting, capital repairs to the building were discussed, and an opportunity for grant requests was created in the amendment to the four Cs lease signed by the agency on August 12th. So the Lincoln City Cultural Center has applied for and received two outside grants for a total of $65,000. The total re-roofing, which is $70,000, and the gutters, $3,800. So the total project for roof and gutters is $73,800. The Cultural Center has then submitted a letter requesting $8,800 from the Urban Renewal Agency to fill this gap, the difference between the grant money they've received and the total project cost. So staff recommends providing a grant in the amount of $8,800 to the Lincoln City Cultural Center for completing the roof and gutter project. You can see here photo of in process, the new roof there on the north portion over the auditorium. And a quick update from Director Price is that the auditorium portion, as you can see, is complete. The west side is partially stripped, partially reshingled, and on hold for weather, obvious reasons there. The east side and the middle have not yet begun, and the gutters are waiting for the roof completion. Here's another picture. And another picture. So, are there any questions?
Any comments, questions? Chester?
This $8,800 will be covered under our budget, our line item budget. Allison?
Yes, it's under, I forget the actual line item.
Other construction?
Yes, other construction.
Thank you.
Then we had budgeted $25,000 in that, for that roof, had we not?
That's right.
Right. Okay, other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What expectancy of the roof did you put on here? Is that like a 20-year, 30-year roof? You know what it is?
Uh, I haven't heard from Nikki, it's 30 years.
Any more comments? Do we need to approve that, or since it's already budgeted, I don't think we need to take any action, do we?
Um, I do think you do, because we've made, we've always made grants of this type something subject to either council or agency approval. And I, I do have that within my purchasing authority, but I would like, at least like a consensus.
Okay.
I would move that we grant the Lincoln City Cultural Center $8,800 for the completion of the roof and gutter project.
Seconded.
There is a second. Discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Did you say that we do need a roll call vote on this?
I think so, it's money.
You want a roll call?
Yeah.
We should have a roll call vote.
All right.
So Ellingson, Norakis.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Quant.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Eggleton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I could, just on that same subject, I'd like to thank, make sure we thank the Board of Directors for the Cultural Center, along with Nikki, for their endeavoring to find these grants that reduced the overall cost of the roof for us, the ultimate owner. And, you know, this was a concern we had, you know, would there be motivation and, you know, or would we be left, the agency, with these structural repairs and improvements? So Nikki, I hope you'll, you know, tell your staff and the board that we're most appreciative of working with us to make these kind of things happen.
Here, here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Cutler Schooner Point Highway 101 turnout project.
All right. The Schooner Point Highway 101 turnout project was envisioned in both the Cutler and the Taft Community Vision Plans. The project site is south of the Schooner Creek Bridge and adjacent or north of the Bay House Restaurant. The project would construct a couple hundred feet of wide sidewalk, which is also part of the Head to Bay Trail, a small gathering area for viewing the bay and informational signs, and an improved parking area, which is currently gravel with controlled turn movement. So there would be a median near, in between the highway and the project site. The project would serve all modes of transportation between the Taft and Cutler districts for residents and visitors, and ADA review of the plans was already done. The project was a good fit for the ODOT Bike Pedestrian Grant Program, which we've used a number of times throughout town. However, as you know, competition for grants has gotten more and more competitive, and greater than it's ever been. Our unofficial feedback was that there were other projects with greater funding need. And the project was submitted for four grants that were, three of them were state, and one was federal. And this was 2010, 2012, and 2011 for the federal grant. So since we have been unsuccessful with requesting grant funds, we are bringing this back to you to see if there's consensus to fund and proceed with construction of the project. The engineer estimate for the project is $134,744.50, and that's as of December 2011. So, here is the project site plan in black and white. The font, I know, is really small, I'm happy to explain any of that. There's some boulders, basalt boulders and native landscaping. We already have some signage ready to install. And here is the concept rendering and plan view, a little more showing some vehicles that are parked there. And this version does not show the median that was added afterwards through discussions with ODOT. And they really believed that having that controlled turn movement would increase safety. And, you know, along there, there are some spots that are, have greater or lesser visibility with traffic going in both directions. So they really felt that the median would help with making sure people can only enter and exit at certain spots. So you'll still be able to go north or south. That, that was going to remain the same, it's just that you'll have to go to the south end of the project area in order to leave the, the project. And then here is the perspective rendering, kind of the fancy one. Are there any questions, thoughts?
I have a question, and that is that in the rendering that you're showing, you're showing all kinds of parking, you're going parallel, straight in, no diagonal. Would not diagonal parking be maybe better in there to allow for more vehicles?
Yes, in these renderings, the parking and the median was not fully shown. So there would be striped parking, and it would be paved, there wouldn't be gravel any longer. So that's just not shown. And I believe it is diagonal parking.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm remembering this project as when we had that long list of opportunities, and we went through the exercise of prioritizing. And if I recall, this project was elevated into, you know, the to-do projects. However, I'd remind the agency that it was, at that time, zero funding, because the plan was for grants that would, would fund this. You know, for me, it doesn't raise to the level of spending actual money on it, at least the, the agency money. I don't mind spending somebody else's. And so, you know, I appreciate staff bringing it back, but it's not something that I see, you know, that I'd be voting for.
Other comments? Chester?
Allison, currently, do we have a sidewalk between, at the south end and the north end of this project? Is there, is this going to connect two sidewalks?
It would fill a portion of the gap. There, in, in the Cutler Community Vision, there was some talk with the owners of the Bay House property to do something in front of their restaurant, and then connect it up with the 62nd sidewalk. So there is a small gap that would remain in front of the Bay House. And then there's a small gap between this and the turnout to the north that is right before the bridge. There is some pedestrian area that has some curbing, so it's protected. Whether or not it's an official sidewalk, and, and it's not very well-integrated, it's tough with gravel when you're going into gravel. And then going onto the bridge, which, you know, was built a long time ago. So it would fill a portion of the gap, but it wouldn't create a contiguous project.
Thank you.
From the bridge south.
Other comments?
Yes.
Are we planning on doing some road changing down there with the way the roads are going, and eventually, and things like this too, right there by 62nd Avenue and things like this? Isn't there, if I remember, we had discussions somewhere along the line, there's, the roads are supposed to be realigned, or something else like this down there past the Bay House?
Yeah, another project that was envisioned in the Cutler Community Vision Plan was to change Southwest 62nd, which, as we all know, as we're driving south and we go into Cutler City, it's kind of a 45-degree angle into the community. And it's kind, it's kind of, most people treat it kind of like a freeway off-ramp, so the speeds are quite high there. And part of the community conversation was that, you know, if there's a way to slow that down, that would be great. And the idea was to basically queue it up as a right angle to the highway, which could be done, but it's just not a project that's made it onto our list of things to design and construct. So that's in the vision plan, but not at all yet, if it will be in the design and construction.
My personal opinion is this, is I think we're piecemealing something here. And I think if we keep on trying for funding from other measures, I think we ought to go with that. As far as spending our own money from Urban Renewal, I don't think it's a good idea. That's my personal opinion. I feel it's, it's piecemeal. You know, we're not going to have a connection sidewalk, maybe not, maybe this, we might change the road down there further on down the line. I think I'd prefer to save the money and use it on maybe an infrastructure project, different infrastructure project later on.
Okay. Other comments?
I note that this area gets a lot of use, a lot of visitors. I just ask that you keep that in mind. There's a, at any given time, there's a, there's quite a few visitors that park and use this area of town. I mean, it's not D River Way Side, but it, it collects quite a few.
I would agree that it's a high-use area, but the thing that concerns me is that the visibility of the bay isn't anywhere near as good on that turnout as the one that's further north. And that's, the one that's further north gets more traffic than, than this one does. So I don't, is there any way in which the visibility of the bay can be improved by removing some of the objects? Without getting in trouble with some other people?
Um, well, I think the visibility is pretty good. I mean, there, there's a natural rocky outcropping that's right there. So there's kind of a significant environmental monument that couldn't be moved. And you can have a view, you know, to the southwest of that, or to the northwest. In terms of other impediments, visual impediments, I think, you know, there's some low brush, and there's also a sign, the casino has a sign there, but that is located on private property. There is a long, skinny parcel of private property that's between the public right-of-way, which is where we would, you know, that's the project areas in ODOT's right-of-way. So that small piece of private property is between the bay and the public right-of-way.
Aren't there some coastal pines that block the view there, too?
There are some.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's mainly what I was referring to.
Okay.
Other comments? Do we want to take action on, on this now, or what's the pleasure of the, of the agency?
Well, I would move that we authorize Urban Renewal staff to proceed with the bidding process for construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is, I mean, is there a compelling reason that this?
No.
I've listened to everything.
Okay. Other discussion? There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, so all in favor of the motion, say, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Sounds like the nays have it, so the motion fails, so we'll take it forward, and I think, Gary, your suggestion's a good one.
Would I need to make a motion, or the board were to think this advice? Maybe we could?
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, yes, sir, I'd like to make that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Question?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can, Gary, what would you, between now and then, expect to add?
Well, you know, I, I was just thinking about the connectivity, connectivity issues, and wondering, and I, I should have studied this, but if, if there would, and maybe I should bring it up right now, be a less expensive way that we could do this. You know, the sidewalk issues, or the sidewalk and pathway issues could, could be addressed, but maybe not do much with the parking. You know, any, anytime we can. Walk and pathway. Thank, just generally speaking.
And I, I wouldn't disagree with you, except for, I don't see, this is an area that, you know, it's, it's off the road now, it's gravelled, so it, it doesn't come to my mind as a safety issue. The pedestrian can get well off, off the road. It's, it'd be a visual, a, you know, some kind of a spiff da vista, and, and I grant that. And that's how I looked at it when I was making my list of priorities last year or the year before, what we'd work on. And I was only willing to do it because it was at zero cost. But I, personally, I'd see other uses for the $150,000.
I mean, to be clear, signs, sidewalk, pathway, would, you'd have to do a little more than, make sure the paint, and have some delineation of some sort. You know, lines painted or something. I was trying to think of something that isn't very expensive.
Yeah, I, I think you're going to get in trouble with it's ODOT's right-of-way, and they are going to come down, and I don't want to speak for ODOT. But you can, you can see how the, the different attempts we've made on grant amounts have varied, trying to entice funders for a little bit of paint, or a little bit of concrete, and, you know, the most recent one into the 2015, 18 stip, you know, raised some questions about drainage, and when ODOT got a hold of it. So, you know, that's why I, I'm not interested in, in the money, you know, if it's coming out of our, our pocket. So, so I, my question still stands is, you know, being able to bring it back, we've already voted and said no, and I guess everything and anything is always on the table by way of a motion. But I, I don't know what, what new would be added to the equation between now and our next meeting, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have. In fact, now you're kind of talking me around to, you know, maybe we should just go ahead and do this tonight. But later on, you know, we, as a unity in the, you know, not, not coming, I'm not talking about this coming out of the ODOT budget, but maybe the next budget, we should appropriate for that, try to, you know, with areas like this, you know, get those things done and work. That's all I'm trying to say. I mean, would the board, in terms of our, would, would our board consider this more of a priority than some of the money on it?
Well, we don't have a couple of years first, so let's remember, remember, remember your list of projects that we voted on and approved.
Yeah. When we were going to start. It might be close.
But I, I understood the vote we just had confirmed that it wasn't a high priority if, if it costs the agency's money.
Say that again?
The vote we just had, which turned down your motion, which was to fund this thing, would reinforce that it's not a very high priority for this agency.
I, I would have thought that what it was, was in response to Gary's question about delaying it for a week, that, that was the way I interpreted that vote, so.
That wasn't your motion, though.
That wasn't my motion. My motion was to do it now.
Right.
He said he'd like to wait a week, and people voted no against the motion. I would assume that that meant they wanted to wait a week. That was my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong.
I would see another motion. Gary could certainly make a motion to bring it back at next meeting.
We've got a motion on the floor right now to do that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
But I, I'm listening to you, and I'm, I'm going to make a compelling, argue to vote against, make another motion right ahead. I'm, I'm not going to be.
Or you can withdraw yours if you want.
Yeah. Can withdraw mine.
What's your pleasure?
Well, no one's second.
Yes, it was a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion on the floor.
Okay. Any further discussion? Are you all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
I think the nays have it. So we'll leave it where it stands.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other project updates?
Okay, the Cutler District Sewer Extension is still under construction. This, for the public viewing audience who, who isn't familiar with the project, it is to extend the existing sanitary sewer line about 1,000 feet, beginning from the intersection of Southwest 62nd and Jettie Avenue to the east side of Highway 101 at 63rd. And here are some photos of, this is actually the, the boring equipment, not as in put you to sleep, but as in bore underneath Highway 101. And it was pretty impressive to see them dig this huge trench and hole on the east side of the highway, and then place the boring equipment into that hole and get it all lined up. And it was, it was a pretty interesting process. They did a great job, and the highway traffic just went on by, you know, slowed down with the caution cones, and big semi trucks were still able to get in and out of the lumberyard, and it just flowed so smoothly. It was, it was very impressive. The contractors worked very well in the neighborhood, and the businesses and residents of the community have been very patient. We've had to, once in a while, do detours of traffic for 63rd, and everyone has been very patient and wonderful. So it's really gone as, as well as we can expect for construction. So the only thing that remains, the sewer line's all installed, we just have to do, they're doing testing and then cleanup work, and then they'll do the asphalt patches over the top, so. I don't know how many photos you want to see of gravel patchwork, but it's all pretty much done. There's the Southwest Keel right-of-way, which is all gravelled. There will be bollards there that will block vehicles, but pedestrians can walk through there. And this is the Looking West on 62nd. Moving on to design.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Oh, was there a question?
I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but, so, I was down there, and something that, it amazed me, really, is they, they went through all the way leading up to, you know, the highway bore, and they were drilling holes in the, off to the side of the road. And so I asked them what that was for. And they, they had put pipes down, and then interconnected it to a pipe on the top, so that if the water table came up too high, it would keep the water out of the ditch that was dug, so that the pipe could be placed just very exactly in a dry setting, so to speak, before it was all taken apart and filled in.
Yes.
I mean, what you're showing is neat, but it isn't. I, I mean, a whole lot more went into it than just that.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, the, the de-watering was.
De-watering.
Very impressive as well. I, I keep saying impressive, but this was really, I mean, the rains started, and they just kept on plugging away this morning, they were out in the rain, cutting the asphalt to get ready for doing the tee patches for the asphalt, so.
And they sit in places, sometimes the water table can come up, you know, above the level of the ditch for the pipe. And so, you know, instead of just putting it in that wet condition, you know, it was dry enough so they could just make sure that it was perfect.
Yeah, and when we first started the project, they had that de-watering pump that kept all the water out of the trenches fairly near a residence home. And it, it's one of the most quiet pumps available, and, and it was pretty quiet, but in the very middle of the night, when it is very quiet out, the pump seemed a little noisy. And we had the, the resident who lives right there where the pump was, she, she said, "Well, I just wish they would have moved the water feature into my yard." So she just had a great attitude, so we really appreciate everyone.
I just wanted people to know a lot of engineering that you don't think about goes into things like this. It isn't, you know, kind of straightforward. Now, there's a lot, a lot of things involved.
Underneath the road, lots of stuff going on.
Mr. Chairman, Allison, would you, thank you, this is meant to be a thank you, of the way you kept, at least this agency, and I know the citizens of that area, informed of the progress. I'm sure that contributed a lot to your lack of angst from the citizens, because I found it very informative, pictures attached, saw the progress, so it was very helpful. So, thank you for doing that.
I'm glad the updates were helpful.
You bet.
Okay, moving along to design work for the D-Lake Utility Undergrounding Project. The consultants completed the preliminary plan. The consultants completed the preliminary plan and profile and is continuing to coordinate with ODOT, and they're waiting for feedback from the utilities about the vault sizes and locations and to confirm the wiring sizes. And today, we received 90% plans for both the D-Lake South First Traffic Signal Replacement and also for the Southwest 35th Street Parking Lot Project. So, those are in our office, and probably within about a week or so, we will review those and then get them turned around to the consultants so that they can finish the plans and the construction documents. So, those are almost done. Yeah. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions? I guess not. Thank you, Allison.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings, no resolutions. Comments from the agency members? None? Then we are adjourned.